Okay, we'll start with you, Ms. Donovan. All right. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our girls' basketball team. And I hope I get all this right. We were trying to figure this out today. They've kind of changed the names on us, so we're just gonna say all of it. The TMS double A, section two, district satellite games at Jellicoe. And then our boys come in second. And then in section two, a tournament in Anderson County, the boys came in first. We want to congratulate the boys then for going on to the final four this weekend in state. They'll be in Murfreesboro. They're gonna be playing Friday night at eight thirty and Saturday at eleven thirty. I want to appreciate and say thank you to all those coaches and parents. Everybody that has pitched in and supported these teams, the businesses. Everyone has really just backed them and done a great job. And I appreciate everything that they're doing. I'm especially proud of how well that the players and the coaches have handled themselves. I'm proud of the character and the sportsmanship that they showed. And I really appreciate what the coaches are teaching these young men and women about what life's really about and that they're doing a good job with all of that. I do want to congratulate Zeke West for winning regional tournament MVP, Scott Jeffers for all tournament, and Gray Todd for all tournament. And now, looking at what we've got coming up this month. Third nine weeks, we're supposed to go out this Wednesday, so that will probably be Monday, once we are back in school. The NAEP test, which was for our eighth grade, was this Friday. That will be postponed. We do have two makeup dates at the end of the month, so we'll schedule that once we get back in school on Monday. No school on the eighteenth. Our early release is on the twentieth. And as of right now, that is all that I have, unless you have something for me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Debbie.
Okay. We've just moved in right along with special ed. We've been providing our intervention. We've been having eligibility meetings, revow meetings, annual IEP meetings. We are seeing several three-year-olds that are coming into our program. We are seeing, we're seeing a number of children, foster children, that are coming in and moving out. So we've stayed pretty busy with our meetings, as far as that goes. I do have one thing for the agenda, and I did lay that up there for you all to look at. The state notified us in January that there had been a change in our federal budget. So you can see on this that we did have a decrease in our IDEA for ages six to twenty-one. So they took some money away from us, not really sure why, but they did give us an extra allocation in our IDEA for three through five-year-olds. So you can see, we've got a pretty good amount for that. So if you all would approve that budget, we've already added that in the E-plan, but nothing has been finalized until you all approve that. And again, that came from the state. Nothing we can do about it, but you know, we get that email and they tell us to go in and change it, so that's what we have to do. Do y'all have any questions as far as for me, as far as special ed or the amendment?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to excuse myself. I've got to run the state.
Thank you. Mr. Schumacher, Special Ed lead board, we'll let you know next.
Okay. As far as coordinate school health goes, I will inform all of you that we have finally, as of last week, finalized our health screenings in the school system. We have to wait till the second semester always with Scott High, where we grab those freshmen, so we finalized that up last week. I do not have all the final numbers and everything calculated yet, but hopefully by next month, I will have all that information for you, as far as the health screenings go. Next, I have two items on the agenda. One is the coordinate school health institute trip that we have to take every year. Normally, it's in Murfreesboro, but now it's in Franklin, and that's April the seventh through the tenth, so I will need you all to approve that overnight trip for me to go to our institute for coordinate school health. And the second item on the agenda is this, this school year, last, the end of last school year, first of this school year, we are very fortunate enough to be able to purchase brand-new audiometers, hearing machines for our nurses and for the screenings that we do. We now have about five of these old ones that we no longer need. And I've discussed this with Mr. Beatty, and he said he would type up a resolution for you all or whatever. But we would like to donate these to one of our partners in the community, SAI, which uses these types of things all the time with their, the people that they have with them. And so if it would be all right and pleasing to the board, I would like to take the five that we have and donate those to SAI for their use, so they can use those. Because we would have to send these off, have them recalibrated, and they're just older. They're about fourteen, fifteen years old. And each one of our schools has got a brand-new one, so we have no more use of these, so I'd like to donate those to them, if that would be all right with you all. And unless you all have any questions, that's, that's all that I have. All right.
Thank you. Ms. Stanley.
Well, first I want to say thanks to all the board members who are serving on the board. And being board members, I know from personal experience that sometimes it's a really challenging situation trying to keep a lot of people happy. So appreciate everything that you do. We do have progress reports going out Monday, February the eleventh, so if the parents will be looking for those. And want to congratulate our two teachers of the year at Winfield School, Michelle Norris and Dave Levens. Both of them are two of our faculty that we're very proud of, as we are so many others. I feel like we're very blessed with the teachers that we have. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Turner. I don't have anything for the agenda. Since we are out the rest of the week, our janitors and custodians will be disinfecting and cleaning and getting all that done and ready. Had a lot of students absent today. That illness has taken a toll on adults as well as students in our district. But again, I, I want to say this, though. These teachers, and students as well, they still, sometimes they're feeling bad, they still come to school because they can't get subs, so I want to commend those teachers for doing that. They didn't have a fever or anything, but that's a, a huge thing, so I want to say thank you for that. But we will be disinfecting and cleaning for the rest of this week. Hopefully, we will get all that stuff cleared out. Progress reports, like these ladies have already mentioned, will go out Monday. They weren't supposed to go out this week, but that will be going home Monday as well. Early release day, we'll be starting that. There's some updates in the compass program that we use that hits on that riding factor as well, which is going to be one of our first tests that we do in April in ELA, so we're gonna go over some of that stuff and just get prepared. There's around forty-five, forty-eight days or so before we start testing, so that's not very many instructional days. So we're gonna just still keep going and get things done. So I have nothing else, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Rector.
Thank you. I don't have much, just a reminder that tonight is Scott High's last home ballgame for basketball season, so if you get an opportunity, come out tonight. The girls' game starts at six-thirty. We'd love to have you. Their final regular season game will be this Friday at Austin East. There was a schedule that was put out earlier in the season that did have a misprint on it, and it had Friday's game at home, but it is not at home. It is away at Austin East on Friday. And that will conclude the regular season for basketball. The district tournament will start on Thursday, February the fourteenth, Valentine's Day. We'll start the district tournament. We do know that that district tournament will be hosted at Alpoa. We will not know the seating of that, and we will not know our place in the seating of that until Friday night's game at Austin East. So I'm sure all of that information will come out very quickly the following week. But that's where we stand right now, as far as basketball season. I know it's hard to believe, but spring sports are already gearing up. I think soccer started this week. Track and field starts next week. I know that baseball and softball, I believe, have started this week as well. And so those spring sports are gearing up, because a lot of those, they will start at the beginning of March with games and those things. So I know that's a little hard to believe, but it's here. We did have several students out today. We, we actually, our number percentage for students last week was a little bit higher, but our issue that we had today was yesterday and today was with teachers. We had several teachers out that were out sick on Friday, then even more on Monday, and then even more today. So we saw that kind of increasing. So we appreciate the ability to have the extra time to let everybody recuperate and recover. Our janitors will also be in the school tonight and tomorrow, over the next few days, making sure that they disinfect, wipe down all of those surfaces, and then spray throughout the entire school. Just a little note, I want to encourage parents that while we have these three days, that if their children, if their children are sick, make sure you keep them home. Yes, we have ballgames, and we love to see you come, but don't bring them if they're sick. Keep them home, because it will just keep this going, okay? So just to practice those good, good habits. And we talked with our kids today about making sure that they washed hands and stayed home and kept their hands to themselves, because you know, that's an important conversation. And really, for me, at this point, that's really all that I have. We will be sending out progress reports on Monday. We were planning to do that by Friday this week, so we'll send out progress reports on Monday. And that's all that I have, unless you all have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horvath, did you have anything?
I don't have much. We're just continuing to work hard towards testing that's coming up. I think that's around forty-five, forty-six testing are instructional days that are left. So everyone's just working hard, trying to get prepared for that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shannon.
Yes. Don't have anything for the agenda. To my knowledge, everything is going extremely well. We're, we're really striving hard to, to make gains for the TN Ready test with the preparations. All of the teachers and students are working extremely hard. And nearing forty days until the testing window opens, it's time to make hay. And, and that's what we keep talking to our students and faculty about. So we, we do appreciate, obviously, the, the time off for the students and the teachers to, to recover from the illnesses that's hit our system. And like so many others, we'll, we'll redouble our efforts to make sure that things are cleaned and sanitized, to make sure that, that this kind of thing doesn't reoccur. But with that being said, one positive thing for sure, soccer is, is up and running, and I think it's a record number of students who are participating in this sport at Robbins as well this year. We're, we're very happy and excited for that season to begin as well. So unless you all have any questions for me, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. You should have in your agenda items, from Ms. Sharon Sexton, a tabulation sheet that, from the chicken processing bid that came in, where I have tallied all of those. And the lowest bid there went to Pilgrim's. So that's who I would recommend that we go with. We only had the two bids. And also on there, I had put on there that I would like to ask the board for permission to be able to process beef off of Anderson County Schools' bid. It does have the wording language in it that allows other systems to purchase from that bid, as long as the vendor themselves, you know, agree. And I will contact them, and if you all approve that, that would just save me not having to go through the bid process. Let me get my feet wet. I've not done beef. I've done pork, chicken, and turkey. But we're having some issues with the beef patties and things that we're getting, not being consistent. And I'd like to try that with the company and see how it goes the next year, put out my own bid. I have had, I have sample, the products, I know the products that they have on bid, on their processing bid, and it is a very good product. That's the only things I have. As everybody else says, I have stuff that's sick. We run short of subs anyways. I've had to shut dish rooms down, eliminate a position, and go to paper products due to people being sick. One went home from Birchville, the hundred and three team today. I had let one go home today here at the office for the same thing. She has, she's very sick, so hopefully this will help us out also. But that's all I have, unless you all have questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ray.
For the agenda, I've got TUT rate season, so I need permission to do bids and applications for E-rate. It's pretty much the same thing we do every year, so nothing special there. We're, we're about halfway through getting our surveillance systems upgraded in the schools. Did quite a bit of work there. Lot of it is replacing old stuff, but we're getting to the point now, we're gonna start putting in some of the, the few new cameras that we've gotten. We've started putting together the, the active panels, which is a, a new form of Promethean board that we purchased with Title Funds and the Chamber of Commerce grant is buying a significant number of those for the high school. The guys have been building computers this week. They did a hundred and twenty laptops last week and got those carts out to the schools. So each school finally has their laptop cart. So it's, it's, you know, it's mundane stuff, but it, it's a lot of, a lot of moving parts. Everything's going well, other than that.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Montana.
Let me. Huntsville Elementary. That's right, Huntsville Elementary. We thought that. Ms. Lisa is involved in a student situation, so she couldn't be here, so she dropped a, a note for me to make some announcements for her. On February the eleventh, the pre-K and kindergarten will have their cap and gown pictures. Then on the twelfth, will be spring pictures at Huntsville Elementary. And on the twelfth, there's also family night reading night. And on the eighteenth, there's no school, because that's President's Day. And on the nineteenth, it's early release day. And the playground committee wanted to express their appreciation to Scott High School for letting them sit up on senior night, and they now have a total of a hundred and seven thousand dollars, which is fantastic. Each school has really been working. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. I just want to mention a couple of things. At our school board meeting, we're asking our building level, teachers of the year, all of them to come to be introduced, and they, everybody receives an incentive that night. Also, we will be announcing the district level teacher of the year that night also. And of course, they will move on to the regional competition. The other thing to, I wanted to announce, the pre-K grant is due this week. If I can get that finished, I will be done with that. It has consumed me for the last minute, all my time, so I will be so happy to have that done for one more year. I wanted to mention, well, let me read what Mr. Hall left me first, and then I'll just explain the calendar a little bit. The notes that Mr. Hall left, he wanted to congratulate the Huntsville Middle Boys' Basketball Team, East Tennessee Class A sectional champs. They have qualified for the final four state tournament in Murfreesboro, and this is the first time the TMS double A has actually had, I guess that we have had, a team that's been able to go to that middle school. A tremendous accomplishment by all the players, the coach, and everyone involved at Huntsville Middle School. He also wanted to announce that Zeke West was named tournament MVP. Then also, special thanks to the calendar committee on the time and efforts for our school system. And we met last Friday. We had a rep from each school, and a principal rep, and instructional coaches rep. And so we've put together a sample calendar that I have given y'all a copy of, and I'll kind of go over the things that were discussed and how that is. Reminder of early release day on Wednesday, February the twentieth, and I think Ms. Lisa mentioned that in her report. As of today, we've used two snow days, and then when he sent this to me, I guess he didn't know for sure about the three days that we're gonna be using for illness, so then that would make five. I think those may be in the same category, not sure, but anyway, as of now, we've actually used the two snow days, and then there'll be three more for illness. And he wants to thank all the coaches, players, and fans for an outstanding middle school basketball season. And then, of course, thanks to all the school board members. I think last week, I know in the end of January was school board appreciation. And as always, we appreciate our school board for all the help and the support that they give us. We, we definitely couldn't do that without, without the school board. And that's all that he has on his announcements. If we look at the calendar, and we talked about different things on that, and if you look at that, this time, on this, this particular calendar, for the first time in a while, we have four in-service days at the beginning of the year. There's none in July. That was, that was a big thing. Nobody really wanted to start in July, even though some school systems do that. But anyway, we start, our, our first in-service day is August the first, as it has been in so many years past, in order to have the breaks that we want and to get out before ending in June. So the first, second, fifth, and sixth, those are the in-service days. The seventh is the service day, with the first full day of school would be, for students, would be the eighth, August eighth. Then, of course, labor days off. Fall break is as it was this year and has been for the past few years, the second week of October, starting October the sixth through the twelfth. Then, of course, we do have Thanksgiving, three days off, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, as we've had that for a while. This year, two, for this next year, two full weeks for Christmas. And actually, we gave up one day for Christmas during this school year's calendar, just to not have to come back after Memorial Day, but this time, we have two full weeks. Then we are, we're actually, the abbreviated day is actually December the twentieth, and then we are back in school on January the sixth. There is not a January in-service day this, this time. Then going on down to, we do have an election in March, March the third, and then spring break. Lot of discussion about spring break. Spring break, according to this calendar, starts that second full week of April, like the fifth through the eleventh, and in conjunction with Good Friday. Some of our schools wanted Good Friday as an extra day, that the way this calendar shows, it is just one of the days within the spring break time. We would, our abbreviated day would be on Saturday, April the twenty-third, and then the last day of school, that would be the last day of school, not April, May the twenty, May the twenty-third, to address Fair Day. Fair Day on this calendar probably would be, what, the twenty-third or the thirtieth? Twenty-third. Mr. Hall had talked to Gabe this past school year, because it was very controversial, and we did not take Fair Day off, but as it ended, we did an abbreviated day. So Mr. Hall said that Gabe had told him that there's a new group coming in, and she was going to see if we could declare that Fair Day to be on Saturday, where students could come and do what they needed to do, if they have the 4-H stuff that would be available for them to do that. Otherwise, we might have to use the abbreviated day for Fair Day, because we don't use that anymore for a registration. And I know the fair really doesn't usually start, because I usually end up taking one of my grandkids at fair. Usually doesn't start till ten anyway. So I guess that would be an option, and so in this calendar, it is a school day unless it might be designated as an abbreviated day. And in this calendar, we're also hoping to get the school board to approve our early release days, just as we did last year. This time, we want those in the calendar, so the parents would know about that. So this is the way the calendar is right now, and, and we have, I don't, I haven't really added up how many each semester, but Eric was there, and he felt fairly fine with the way the semesters were divided. So any questions about that?
Do you know when the fair is gonna be?
Not sure. We never know, and sometimes we end up getting on the wrong day. I think it's gonna depend on whether they get this new company coming in.
Do anybody have a question?
November eleventh.
Oh, I forgot. Veterans Day. Oh, my gosh.
Veterans Day was agreed upon unanimously, if we're going to take off these Presidents' Day and Martin Luther King's Day. Personally, and I know our veterans feel very strongly about that, they deserve to be Personally, and I know our veterans feel very strongly about that, they deserve to be recognized too. So, yes.
I agree.
Is that marked on there?
Yes.
It is.
Does that mean we're taking off that day?
Yes. Yes, we are off Veterans Day.
And what about the schools that honor our Veterans Day?
We would.
They'll do that the week before or after.
Yeah. They usually have it on Friday. And we really, our schools kind of spread that out to where, if everybody has it on the same day at the same time, then our veterans can't go, and they can't go, and... So, I think everybody was happy with the way Veterans Day.
Yeah, it was spread out. Uh, there's only one thing that I felt like, uh, not good, and, uh, Fairview did theirs after Veterans Day. And it was a really, really good program, but because it's after the Veterans Day, there weren't many people to show up, and I thought that's kind of sad, because they put on a very good program. So...
It's good if we can get that word out to veterans. I know Ms. Stanley does a super job of making sure that all of our veterans know when hers is. Uh, and you have a big group, I saw a picture in the paper, and I'm wrong with that. Sometimes they don't realize when you're even having it. So, I, I don't know a better, you know, I don't know the best way to do that, but I do think more would come if they knew the day and time.
Maybe we could just put a schedule in the paper that listed all of the times and the hours.
And on our website, and...
Yeah.
We do need to get the word out, because these students work hard to put on a good program.
Okay. Do you have anything, Diane?
No.
We're just still looking for bus drivers. I know last week at Huntsville, there were several days that a bus was an hour late coming in, and the students were going home an hour late. So, if there's anyone out there that's interested in driving a bus, and even if you could get a partner or a buddy, one of you could do mornings, and one could do afternoon, or maybe your employer will let some, uh, you know, work with you, and they'll put you on for an hour of the morning, an hour in the afternoon. But we definitely have a need for bus drivers.
I'd just like to thank everybody for the goodies, the candy and the bag, the treats, and the gifts, Tiffy. I appreciate all of you very much.
Has this been added to the agenda for our next meeting, the contract for the use of our facilities? We spoke last time about the basketball, the Tinseltown thing. I think we needed to add that to the agenda for next time. It's not on there yet, is it?
I don't know.
I think, I think Bill mentioned it in an email or something, that we needed to add this to the agenda, uh, because it starts in March.
Okay.
And we need to go ahead and add this. I think, I guess approve the contract, and also change the current policy. Because our policy right now, you know, you can't have any, uh, private profit. And if we're going to approve or dis, uh, or disapprove, then we need to figure out if we're going to change the policy or not, so.
Mr. Betty couldn't be here tonight because he is, you know, sick, and his family's sick and everything. I had talked to one of the representatives of TinseltownSports.com.
Yeah.
And showed him a copy of that, and the only concern that, that they had, and they didn't know if, you know, if needed to be a personal contract between the schools or whatever, they don't want anything to do with concessions, you know, if, for that thing. They're all about basketball and sports.
Yeah.
You know, and the school can have concessions, but they don't want to be responsible for, you know, somebody tearing up the popcorn popper or something like that. And I don't know how, uh, how to put that in the contract, you know, to divide it like that.
Well, normally, I mean, I'll just, if you don't care, normally, if, if we have somebody come, a group come in, which we've never done, what y'all are talking about here before, but, like, we have a separate contract that we will have each group complete, and it specifically says, like, what parts of the facility they're going to use, um, what parts they're not going to use. So, if, if a group were to come in and be, like, just going to use, say, the Little Theater, then that would be what their contract would state, they're just going to use that. Or they're just going to have access to the gym, and they do not, the concessions stand. And so, if it were a school group or something, then we wouldn't even have to do anything for that. Um, but that's normally how we would do, you know, do for that.
Have you had a chance to look at that contract?
Um, I, this is the first I'm hearing of it, so I don't know.
We've got copies, uh, I remember Bill said he was pleased with it. I'm sure Mr. Betty's confident in it, otherwise, he wouldn't have gave it to us, but, uh...
And the other question that they asked was, you know, like, there was a $500 deposit, and would that be returned if everything, you know, they did everything they said in the contract? And I, I said, I assume so, but that's what most deposits are. But that was just things, uh, you know, to think about, and, uh, as we approved this policy. But I was, I'm impressed with the insurance.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it does. But this board was, uh, unanimously agreeing that we would like to see this happen, right? And we'd like to see the Tinseltown, because of all the advantages that's going to be coming in by this, um, this tournament. And it could be something every year, but, and it looks like there'd be a school group that would need to do the concessions that day, because they're always needing money.
Diane, what schools is this? Is this all the schools?
No, it's just, uh, Scott High, Onata, but, and Birchfield, is Birchfield, uh, was Birchfield in?
Yes.
And the Boys and Girls Club, they were going to use, like, four different rooms to field it.
Why don't they just use those four? He said, starting out small, you know, I mean, not using as many teams, I think. I mean, they were even considering, uh, just using Onata, the park gym, and, you know, if, if we, if our policy didn't change, and it's not approved in time for them to, to use our schools, they were just going to go with the gyms there at Onata.
Well, it just seems like it's going to be a, a situation where the school, a, a school would benefit, that that ought to be rotated.
Well, and my question is, is there any benefit to the school? I mean, without really reading the contract, is there really any benefit? Or is it just the idea that we're just basically giving the... Well, I mean, that would be for whatever group, so I mean, like, if I don't have a group, I mean, y'all can come do concessions, it doesn't matter to me, you know, who does that? Um, but I mean, would that just be it? It's just, you know, running the concession? There's not really, other than a, I'm assuming, I, I just haven't looked at it, so I would like to look at it. The, the question, the big question that I would have on changing the policy, um, because we run into a lot of this throughout the year, a lot, of people wanting to use school facilities for private monetary gain, a lot of groups, a lot of people. Um, is this something that we want to make a policy change, so that you're saying, hey, we want this to happen all the time? Um, we want people to be able to do this? Or is this just a one-time, we want this group to be able to use it?
It's, uh, if they've got the insurance, if this board accepts this policy, they're going to have to provide that insurance before they can use our school facility.
Okay.
Any group that comes in to use our facilities, they're going to have to have their own insurance.
Right.
Because we're not going to pay for their insurance to use it.
Absolutely.
I understand what Ms. Stanley's saying, that's a good idea. Um, but because this is at, in a beginning stage, we are just trying to start small. I say "we," it is, um, it's an AAU tournament for grades four through eight, I believe. And it's a big thing that goes on every year, but we need Scott County kids to be involved in this, because, um, it's just going to help our school teams get better. And it, it just provides some experience that they're needing.
I agree with that a hundred percent, Diane, I just don't understand why it would be just, and this is nothing about Birchfield, but why it would be just one county school? I mean, that, I, I don't find the rationale in that. I mean, if you can do it at Birchfield, why can't you do it at Fairview, or Robbins, or Winfield, or Huntsville, or any of the other schools? That's my question.
And we're, we're not the organizers of that. Right, we haven't picked the schools for some reason, they have. And it's people in the community that travels with these AAU teams that's tired of traveling, and they'd like to bring, bring it here so that our kids don't have to travel.
Well, I'm, I'm familiar with that. I have a coach up there at school that does an AAU team, so I'm very familiar with it. Does Campbell County do that, and also Morgan County?
I know Marable and Campbell does, I know. And there's, you know, different groups that have different names, I'm sure. But, but our party is making sure that whoever uses our facility has insurance to cover anything that goes on.
Sure.
And then it's a clear contract between the two facilities. But when you were saying about rotating the schools, if it goes well this year, next year probably, they would ask you. And they may, you know, may get enough teams in here, we can use all the schools, which would be ideal. I mean, because that's going to bring a lot of money into our, to our county, if it works.
Which I think we should make these available to everybody tonight, so they can go with them before, or everybody wants one here. Um, but it's got some good things in it, like it says, an application can be rejected for any reason by the board. So, it's almost going to be like an application process. They're going to have to apply and say, hey, can we use it?
Right.
And make money off of it. And I think for us, or I'll speak for myself, for myself, I got to ask myself, is this going to benefit our kids, our community, and our schools? And if those are yes, I don't care if somebody else makes a little money, as long as it meets those, I'm good with it. If somebody else makes money, that's them, but if, if we make money, our kids are having good experiences, uh, our kids are benefiting, our community is, um, I'm all for it.
Are we still keeping in there, would they still keep that, um, I guess, that standard that we had to have somebody from the school at each event, and that they would be compensated?
It says the principal of the approved school may approve executive contract.
My, my questions may be answered by reading that, so I don't want to repeat that. Here's, here's all I'll, I'll say as far as just changing the policy to open the door to just anybody that wants to come in and do that. Um, my concern is that it can become a management, a really difficult, and, and I guess, I guess I probably get the brunt of this, guys, because I get a lot of people wanting to use our facility a lot. Um, it can become a management nightmare. Um, I'm, we're managing it five days a week. To imagine managing it seven, and having to come up with management on that weekend schedule, and still have to maintain the people that I need to maintain to do the jobs during the day, during the regular schedule, that concerns me. Um, so, having a one-time big event that we can plan, great for in the future, yeah, that sounds wonderful. But being able to open that up to an all-the-time request, I have concerns about that, because I will absolutely get bombarded, and, and I've got to be able to do my first job first.
And it does say, well, the well-being for students.
Sure.
So, it's got to benefit students, it can't just be something, you know, for adults.
Right.
It, it's got to be for students.
And again, a lot of my questions may be answered by reading this, thank you.
Good discussion. Questions that need to be answered.
Yeah, we're also on a timeline, and that's the thing, is if, if we are going to do this, it starts in March. And we're not going to have time to either say, yeah, we want it, or no, we don't, if we don't put it on the agenda.
Is this a weekend thing? Is it a weekend thing? I'm sure it is. It's just Saturday and Sunday. I think the private's are on weekends, right?
Are you sure?
No.
I, I'm not sure if this is one weekend.
Well, oh.
Or is it just not on the weekends?
I mean, they have lots of things, but if you look it on TinseltownSports.com.
Yeah.
It is just, uh, it might be Friday night and Saturday, but it is one weekend.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, now, we're discussing it, is there anything else we need to discuss? Because we're going to have to vote on this next week, and let them know right away whether we, they can schedule this. So, we're going to have to, uh, we need to meet, or let Bill and whoever discuss it?
Probably need to have a special call meeting to discuss that, then. Give everybody a chance to look at it, what do you think?
I at least feel comfortable that it's an application process, and we can shut them down at any time. If somebody says, if somebody says, we want to do this, we want to do this, even if we change the policy now, they're still going to have to apply. And, and all we got to say is, as a board, we're not approving any applications, and they can put them in, but we're just going to reject them until we figure out what exactly we want to do that works for us. But, I mean, if this is something that is going to be great, and we all find out all the details, and everybody's like, man, this is going to be a good thing for Scott County, and we pass it up, and the opportunity don't come back, I'm going to be regretful.
Yes.
Um, I hate that we didn't have time to really, um, have more discussions. But, I mean, it wasn't really brought to my attention until then.
Okay, everything, uh, we want to get the agenda is a donation to Operation Cherry.
It's on there.
Is it on there?
It's on there, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. Does anyone else have anything?
So, are we going to try to have a special call meeting, or before next Thursday?
I think we should, maybe wait on the attorney and Bill.
Yeah. Because we need to discuss it, and, and let's, let Ms. Rector read that.
Yeah, principals and most of the hairs.
Yeah. Because I've not really gotten to read it either.
I haven't either.
I know what we asked for, and I trust John, but we all need to read that.
Yeah, we did.
On that statement, that this is something he drew up several years ago.
I mean, because...
Was that, he, he had done it about 30 years ago. They have to say, we, this day, this day, we have to free go. I think we should, it was totally controlled. And, and, you know, they got... And if they got concerns, if they got concerns and they don't want that, and they got bad concerns, they can always just say, no, until we figure it out.
All of their events on their website show Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah.
One weekend.
Yeah. I mean, they've got numerous events, but they're all Friday, Saturday, Sundays on their website.
I think, I spoke with Bill last time, too. I, he was going to talk to Campbell County and some of the other places that, uh, does this, and I'm sure they, they've been doing it for a long time, is my understanding. And if they had problems, we're likely to have the same problems. And if they had any hiccups in the beginning stages, they could probably share those with us. But hopefully with, uh, you know, Bill, or Bill and John, we can get everything answered.
Okay. Anybody else, anything, Diane?
Well, if this does go through, any of the school board could be there for this, uh, tournament and see firsthand ourselves. But I think it's something we need to do for these kids, because they're having to travel all the time, everywhere, to go play ball, when they could get a chance to play right here, in their own hometown. And think about how many people will be here buying gas and eating, and all the other things that they would do in Scott County.
True. And I, and I don't think those are bad things, those are very legitimate reasons. I've had, you know, my, watched my parents travel many summers, you know, to different things. It's just, you know, that say in the devil's in the details, I want to make sure we get the details down, and, and make sure we don't, um, we just don't overstretch ourselves, because we don't have the staffing that Campbell County has. We don't have, um, those, some of those things in place that really make this stuff run. It's not just a phone call and a fax that says, hey, I'm going to come to your gym. There's a lot more that goes into making sure that something like this is pulled off and pulled off well. And we want to do it the right way if we bring it in for our kids. So, I just want to make sure that the details are there, and, and look at it, it's not, I'm not summarily opposed to it or anything like that, I just want to make sure that the details are right.
The important thing is going to be to make sure that contract is done over the five days come, and that everything...
Yeah, and, and whose responsibility is it going to be to do certain things? And again, I think, I, I don't mind, I, I think the idea of doing these things, again, in small increments are great, but the idea of just changing something to allow anybody to come in and request things, guys, there's a lot of people out there that are going to come in and request a lot of things. I, I just, I think we're underestimating the, I know the number of phone calls that I get a year to ask to use the facilities for different things. And some of it's stuff that might, you know, might pass the application test, some of it's stuff that probably wouldn't. Um, but again, I just want to make sure that we look at the details and, and have some understandings there that, that show us in the best light, and do the best thing for our kids.
Okay. Anything else before we go? Okay. We can go home.